Alright, who's gonna start with the introduction? Am I just gonna call them on one by one?
We're gonna start with Principal Hanfield from Quaybog Regional Middle High School.
Where am I going?
Right here.
Sure.
Right in this chair.
He can sit in the chair now. You don't have to sit.
So the purpose obviously, as you know from the opening, is to introduce new staff. So I'm very proud to introduce to you the following from Quaybog Regional Middle High School. Kayla Hatch. She stands up and waits. Kayla's joining us in science grade eight this year. Jamie De Pace, who's behind her.
You guys stay standing.
Is our PLTW teacher in grades seven and eight. Caitlin Mascol joins us in grade nine for ELA. Jackson Grujin is joining us in math in grade eight. And Carly Williams is joining us in special education in grade seven. Yes, that's what I thought. Thank you.
You guys, I'd like to get a picture with you and Principal Hanfield, please. So this is one of the most exciting times of the year for us because we get folks that come in in the first year of teaching, as well as folks that have many years of teaching. And I think that, you know, having conversations with everybody here, I think they have found a home at Quaybog. It's absolutely exciting.
And we get Phil.
And we get an address.
You ready, Provost?
Sure.
This is Provost, you're next.
Sure. Hi, good evening. It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Sarah Shea. There she is. She is our new fifth grade classroom teacher. So stay standing. I'm also going to introduce Mr. Ian Weeks.
Weeks.
Weeks. He is our KDA six music teacher. And I have Miss Amy Nasiyaka. She is a paraprofessional in our SOAR ABA program. And Ms. Jennifer Carranda, who is also a paraprofessional in our SOAR ABA program. Sorry, I didn't know about the thing.
You guys didn't know you were gonna get your picture taken. Someone can stand right in front of Ian, because I don't think you're gonna block it. And Ian, you can stay standing, right?
Well, good evening, thanks for having us. We also have four new staff at Warren Community Elementary School. I won't blame Ian standing again, but he probably has to come for a picture. We share a music teacher. So Ian is in my building three days a week and over in Westbrookfield two days a week, KDA six music. We also have Colin Reed. Colin comes to us this year as our new stars teacher. Caitlin Lawrence, speech-language pathologist. And Sarah Rogers, she's part of the 15th team as a special education teacher.
Come on up, Ian. Please get another one.
There's more students here. Ms. Perkins is new for Duff. That's right. Mr. Duff mentioned in the last meeting, she's been here her whole life. She's our third grade teacher this year.
So I got the honor to come to the new teacher orientation day, which is always a fun day because you get to see not only the new teachers from the district, but the, I'll call them tenured teachers, that are the mentors, you know, for the individuals. And I'll mirror the same thing that I said then, is, you know, I feel that you guys are probably joining one of the best districts in the state. I will put you guys as teachers, I'll put the administration as administrators, and I'll put the students as students against any other district in this state. And I feel that we, not only will hold our own, but we will rise to the top. So, again, welcome. You know, if you have any questions, I know your mentors are probably already big helps, but you've got your administrative team, you know, you can always reach out to us. I don't know how much we can always help you, but, you know, we can always be a sounding board if you need that. So, again, welcome. You don't have to stay. You're more than welcome to stay and listen to the student advisory council, because they're next. And they were very excited that they were gonna have a big crowd to talk to tonight. So, you know, you can hear all the goings-on at Quaybog, so. Thank you, guys. Yeah, you wanna introduce them?
Alright, so this year, our new student advisory council members are Hannah Emmeroff and Kendall Laverly here. Hannah and Kendall have been outstanding students since kindergarten all the way through, from ninth through 12th grade. They've been extremely involved in athletics, student council, NHS. They're just model students for us here at Quaybog. Hannah was here last year and did our last school committee meeting. Kendall was not here for that meeting. Hannah did a super job last year to start it off. So this will be their first meeting this year. And I always love to see the growth of students, particularly in the public speaking part. The first time is always a little bit nerve-wracking, but it gets a little bit easier each time. So these are real lessons that will be beneficial for you guys as you go to market yourselves, as you go into the real world for college and so forth. So welcome Hannah and Kendall.
Oh, I'll push them over.
You're welcome.
Okay, Suco has been doing a lot of stuff lately, they're pretty busy. So they started with the seventh grade orientation and welcomed our new members to a school committee. And they're also opening our school store next Monday. They're gonna be selling things like snacks and drinks in March for kids who stay after school. They're also doing the annual powder puff tournament, that's gonna be held on September 17th for grades nine through 12. And homecoming is gonna be in the Quaybog gym October 21st. And so for National Arts Society, the candidates, and the parents have meetings for the new and upcoming students. And they discuss some of the important things for NHS and what to expect going into the application process. And then, for like the current members, we also have our first meeting this week, and we're gonna have a barbecue for the seventh of September. And we're gonna have games, tournaments, music, food. And it's just a good way to bring NHS together and just have a good community. Senior updates, we've all been heating our parking spots, there's some pictures down below. So if you go by your student parking lot, you should definitely check them out, they're all coming out really nicely. Senior sunrise, it was a nice way to kick off the year for our class bringing it together. We had a really good turnout, we had probably about like 1250 kids show up. It was great, it was good bonding, we got a lot of pictures. And also we took the Dunkin' Donuts and Dip and Donuts for our celebrations. Open houses went extremely well at all three schools. Parents and students had the opportunity to meet the teachers and learn expectations for the school year. Many community members such as PTO, PTG, Country Bank Athletic Booster Club, and other community organizations, when they're in booths, kind of bring the community together. So thank you all for your support. Sports updates, there's a lot of fluid chemistry up there. Apparently girls soccer is actually 1-1-1, according to Mr. Schrecker. The golf team is doing really good, 2-0. We have three undefeated teams right now. Football and field hockey are also undefeated. Boys soccer, well, I guess they're defeated too, with one side of the soccer. And then cross-country is 1-1. Okay, so we're having trick-or-treat here on October 14th, and it's gonna be hosted by the parent-teacher organization from Warren, Westbrookfield. And so Suco's gonna be playing together a bunch of hallways, I think they do that in here. Yeah. And then NHS, we're gonna be holding a can drive when we do like the trick-or-treating in the common earlier. And we're also gonna be handing out candy, a comment too. Quaybog is a US-based silver school for the seventh year in a row. We're one of the best high schools in Massachusetts, and we're ranked 71st in all schools in Massachusetts, which is really good, top 20 percent. So I wanna thank our awesome staff and students for that, because that's a big accomplishment. And it showed that Mr. Duff, all the schools that are above us, and they're really good. So it's great. Any questions?
Are you guys participating in powder puff?
No, 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 no. We're in the process of figuring it out. Yes, negotiating those contracts, so we'll see, hopefully.
Whose parking spot was the mine with the seagull?
Evelyn Doe.
I don't know her. I like her parking spot, though.
I'll let her know.
You'll meet Evelyn at the next school committee meeting, actually.
Perfect. I'll let her know.
Well, thank you, guys. I know you guys have homework, so, you know, you're free to stay, but like everybody else, you're also free to go, so. Go study, and we'll see you guys next month. Alright, so kind of thinking back off of what Hannah and Kendall said, is I wanted to kind of throw out some recognition to some school community members, both organizations and individuals. I think kind of one of the things that makes Quaybog special and makes Quaybog Quaybog is the true, real sense of community that we have. So I reached out to all the principals and I asked them, you know, kind of like what took place over the summer and things like that. And, you know, in Westbrookfield, they didn't have any volunteers, but they did get a lot of donations. So I just wanna thank, you know, Country Bank, Westbrookfield Savings Bank, the Congressional Church, the Rotary Club, Quirkwire. They all made donations to the school. I know here at the high school, I believe, Country Bank and Walmart made donations as well, in ways of like supplies and things like that. Big State Health did this too, yeah, they always make those donations to the CNA program. We do have some groups that are primarily made up of volunteers that support up the students in ways that our budget can't. I mean, as we all know, our budget is what it is, and sometimes it's a little tighter than others. But, you know, we basically have kind of like five main groups that really truly rely on volunteers in the community to support students. The three PTOs, Warren Community Elementary PTO, Quaybog PTO, Westbrookfield is a PTG, but it's not a PTO, but it's the same basic group of people that come and help and support. The Warren Elementary PTO meet the first Monday of the month. So if there's anybody that ever wants to join and help out and, you know, be a part of the community, they're always willing to take on new people. The Westbrookfield PTG meets the first Wednesday of the month. The Quaybog Regional Middle High School PTO doesn't have a set date yet, but their first meeting is Thursday, September 28th, so if anybody's interested in that. And then we have two groups of people that primarily support, you know, specific parts of our community. You know, the Performing Arts Booster Club, which usually meet the second Monday of the month, and then the Athletic Booster Club, which meets the second Tuesday of the month. One of the things that I asked Mr. Duff to do is if we could put together some kind of like a district calendar on the homepage to kind of let people know of things outside of, you know, the academics that take place. PTO meetings, open houses, powder puff, you know, activities that take place over the course of, you know, the weekends and things like that. I also wanna thank some students who came in and helped paint the cafeteria. I don't know if anybody noticed at the cafeteria at the middle high school got a little facelift. So I wanna thank, they're all seniors, Aurora Powers, Isabel Burgess, Cameron Volbeck, and Abigail Long. We also have Lucy Sannelli, who graduated last year, come in over the summer, and they all volunteered and donated their time to paint the cafeteria and make it look really nice and fresh and clean. I also want to thank the following groups and people and everything like that, because as you know, the PTO in Warren put in a new swing set to help out with the kindergarten kids. They had, you know, three swings and I don't know, 40, 50 kids that used the swings, and there was always a line with the swings, so they put in some more swings. So there were two different phases of this. The building of the swing sets, trimming the trees, concrete work, you know, and all of that stuff was Chad Goudreau, Zach Glueier, Shane Miller, Tyler Goodfield. Mr. Slattery, JJ Contractors, came with the heavy equipment, and Southern Fence came with heavy equipment and they donated the concrete for it. Once that all got set and everything like that, the fun begins of, you know, spreading stones, spreading mulch, and all of that fun stuff. I think there were a couple hundred yards of play mulch, which is different than regular bark mulch. It's a tumble mulch and it's specifically for playgrounds. So there's a couple hundred, you know, cubic yards of that that needed to get spread. So with the PTO, the Bedarn family, the Peliquin family, Matt, Judy family came with the tractors, Dosable family, Sean Egan, the Cassadet family, Mr. Duff was there, Ms. Vaynerd was there, the Richer family was there with a tractor, and Tracy Mendoza was there. And they were all, you know, butt, butt shuttles and rigs and kids and, you know, had a lot of free labor to spread some mulch. So, again, I think this is kind of makes, it makes Quaybog Quaybog. It makes us, you know, special and a tight-knit community. And obviously, if there's anybody in the home that wants to come and volunteer and help in any of those groups, it'd be greatly appreciated, I'm sure, by those groups. Click up there, we'll take a picture.
Yep, so the school committee had asked myself, we're coming up with a calendar for the district, I'd like to take credit for it, but I can't. Our new technology director, as well as our technology assistants, Tim McCormick and Max Silverman, along with Angela Ruggier, Amanda McDermott, Audrey Steg, Annette Leclaire, and Beryl Wagner, all came together. So on the Quaybog Regional School District website, on the district homepage, it'll have all the information for the three schools with the events that are coming up. If you have a child that's specific to Warren or Westbrookfield, if you go on their page, all of their information is on the calendar at the bottom of their page as well. So the administrative team, the technology folks, did a spectacular job of getting that done in a really tight and efficient, so just so that parents and community members know what's going on at Quaybog, it is on the district website now.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, and then I got one last shout-out, which I think is kind of a, it's a pretty neat shout-out. We usually do, you know, sports recognitions at the end of the sports season, but this past spring with, you know, track going pretty much up until the end of the year, and, you know, with summer being the summer program, you know, that we do, it's not really, you know, felt like it was worth speaking about then. So I figured I'd take the first year, the first meeting of the year, and just, you know, shout-out to two students. One just graduated last year, but Owen Stephens is still here, he's a senior coming this year. So back on May 30th, we had the Division VI State Championship, which is basically, you know, what we call states. And Owen competes in high jump and the long jump. And he placed fourth in the high jump, and he placed second in the long jump. And that gave him the opportunity to participate in the New England Junior Olympic Championship, which was the end of June, where he placed sixth in the high jump, and he placed first in the long jump. From there, he got the ability to participate in the Region I Junior Olympic Championships, which was like, I think, somewhere down in New York or something like that. So now, not just New England, now northeast. He placed fourth in the high jump and the long jump. That gave him the ability to, he qualified to compete in the Nationals at Eugene, Oregon. He was not able to go to the Nationals, obviously, it's an expensive trip, you know, over the course of summer and everything like that. But I wanna say, that's probably the first Quaybog athlete that we've had, at least in the 20 years that I know of, I don't know, maybe even longer. I asked Mr. Bouchard, Mr. Bouchard didn't really know anybody prior to his being the athletic director that ever qualified for Nationals. But, you know, quite a shout-out to Owen, he's a senior this year, so it'll be some pretty spectacular things for him to build on. His sister Maggie, who graduated last year, placed fifth in the Region I, and she also qualified for Nationals in Oregon. So I know she's not here anymore, she's at Springfield College, but, you know, congratulations to both the Stephens, because that's a pretty spectacular achievement for, you know, a Quaybog student.
What event did Maggie do?
So Maggie did the discus, and she placed, she placed fifth in the Region I with a throw of, I don't know, something crazy, it was like 60 feet or something. It was, it was, it was pretty, it's pretty impressive that, you know, we've got, you know, kids in our district, and I mean, obviously, you know, we all know, we always tell, you know, our own students and our student athletes, and we watch them, but to see them be able to compete in stages like that is pretty something. So, I know neither one of them are here, but I just wanted to give them the recognition that I feel they both deserve as well. So, that's it for community recognition, and I think it's a pretty good, a pretty good community that's pretty involved in our school. Next thing on the agenda, we've got the Washington DC preliminary approval. Mr. Hanfield, you gonna go over that?
I can, sure. Good evening again. So as been past practice here at Quaybog, we take our eighth graders to Washington DC. I was fortunate that I was able to tag along last spring with last year's eighth graders and had a wonderful time. So we're taking them to the fourth once again, and I believe the itinerary may be for you. It's the same itinerary that we've followed in the past, you just have to figure out whether we're gonna leave on Sunday or Monday. But right now, it's sketched out to be Sunday. The cost is roughly $9.50 per student, that's what the initial quote was from Landmark. We'll see if we can wing that down a little bit to make it a little bit more affordable. And then I'll be working with Mr. Duff and the eighth grade team to figure out if it's important using it to use and not to help bring that price down. But no child will be left behind, so to speak, as it relates to this trip. So it's before you sign for preliminary approval, and then once we get all the details lined up, we'll bring you back for final approval.
So as Mr. Hanfield said, it is on our packet, I think it's like, what, three or four days, you know, four days, and I know, my kids went back when they were eighth graded, it's a busy four days.
It is.
Right, Mr. Hanfield? They go through a lot, and I think, I think one of the students last year said they did 42,000 steps or something like that in the course of a day. So they're busy, but they get to see a lot of really, really interesting and special things in DC. If anybody's got any questions for Mr. Hanfield. Otherwise, we'll look forward to preliminary approval.
Can I just make a comment? When I worked in South Padley, we went to Washington DC, and the veterans were very generous, the local chapter, in sponsoring some of the students. And we partnered with them to do the Patriots Pen Two, which is an essay contest, which really melts nice with eighth grade, so that might be a resource for our community.
Thank you. That is a great resource. I'll check that out, thank you.
It's the 19th through the 22nd of March, is that correct?
Yes.
Intenderly. I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary Washington DC trip for spring of '24.
Second?
We should need second, any further discussion? All favor. Alright. Food service update. First and foremost, Missy, thank you very much for the food. It was very good.
I'm glad you were doing it.
I skipped over the vegetables, but everything else was really good.
I'm glad you were doing it. We've actually had some changes to staff as well this year. Our I-Cook in Westbrookfield resigned, she needs to take care of her linsen. Sonia came out of retirement from Quaybog to go over there and take care of Westbrookfield and make sure they weren't struggling. And Rebecca Messie, who was here with us tonight, she provided all the food for us tonight, took over as head book here at Quaybog. We also hired Cindy Merrill as an assistant book, she's picking up really fast, she's fantastic. So, staff is good. We received a grant to run a fresh fruit vegetable program at both elementary schools. We received $14,135 for Westbrookfield and $17,655 for Warren. They'll get a fresh fruit or vegetable snack three days a week until the funds run out. It's a great program, we have a few snacks, because we don't have a lot of staff that can take care of it. I have one girl listening here at both schools. So first of all, we'll just plug it along with that one. We also received approval from Desi to purchase our outdoor walking freezer finally. I have, I only brought one, but if you guys wanna look at it, this is what I purchased. It's all fiberglass, it's seamless, it comes 100% wire, all you have to do is make the connection to the building. And it's $33,470, that's the cost. But it's a beautiful, it's not gonna leak, it's got a 25-year warranty on it, so we should be good for a while.
And for those of you that are not part of the building and the budget subcommittee, that cost does not come out of our budget, that comes strictly out of the food service revolving account, which Missy has done a fantastic job in turning that program around over the last few years. You know, prior to Missy being the food service director, we were in a bit of a hole, to put it mildly, and Missy's done a fantastic job of turning that around to the point where I think we made a motion in the budget subcommittee that she doesn't need to come monthly now to give us an update, it can be quarterly or as needed, so, you know, yeah, that's not, that's not coming out of our budget, and it'll give us the ability to store all the food we can possibly use.
With the amount of meals that we are going through now every single day, they upped what we're getting for our government food by $20,000. So we needed more space to put it in, we don't have enough room anywhere. So the concrete pad, hopefully, should get poured soon, and it's 12 weeks out for the freezer. Stock it up with food.
Well, thank you for all you do, Missy, thank you very much.
One last note, there are some boxes up there, so if anybody wants to take any of that stuff home, please feel free.
So which has to report?
So Mr. Estrada and I went to the Westbrookfield Select Board meeting last week. We do have some catch basin issues over at Westbrookfield Elementary School, we spoke about it in the building subcommittee meeting we have tonight. They are made out of concrete, and over time, I think, Mark, were they 1998, maybe?
Eighty-nine.
1989. Over time, with the amount of salt that goes to treat the roads, has deteriorated the catch basins and potentially the pipes, the pipes that are underground are concrete as well. So we met with the town of Westbrookfield, Westbrookfield understands that it's a capital improvement plan, which would be only by the town of Westbrookfield. But prior to getting into a capital improvement plan, their recommendation is that we have the pipe scope, so we know exactly how, the magnitude of the project, because this would be ripping up the entire lot, and then replacing the pipes, building the catch basins, and then repaving it, which would be a very expensive project to do. So prior to just fixing the catch basins and continuing to have a problem, we're gonna move forward, we're getting a quote to have the pipe scoped. And once we do that, we're gonna meet with Jim Bailey and Ron San Angelo, who's the town administrator for the town of Westbrookfield, who will meet back with the select board, but they were very open to looking at this project. In an email and a correspondence, they felt as if it was not a safety issue. Mr. Estrada and I, in the board of select, we talked to them a bit. We convinced that it is a safety issue, that we need to make sure that, we're taking some precautionary measures to make sure that, you know, a student doesn't trip or fall, or a member of the community doesn't trip or fall, and wanna call it a sinkhole, it's not a deep sinkhole, but it's eight inches down, and as it rains, it washes out a little bit more. They put a metal plate over the front one, is in the circle in front of Westbrookfield Elementary School, that's where the buses go. So they have a metal plate in the front, the water can still get behind it, you can get into the catch basin, it was designed by Jim Bailey, Mark, it was working very well. I've asked if they put two additional plates in the rear parking lot, in the center of the parking lot. If you've been there, they've been combed off, but putting cones up doesn't necessarily prevent somebody from walking through there, particularly at night, where you get young kids that run around. So the town did agree to put two additional metal plates over the two catch basins that are in the center parking lot in the rear, where staff and community members park for sports and soccer and things like that. So we will be getting a quote to have the pipe scoped, and then we'll come back to the building subcommittee and let them know what the results of that are. And we look forward to meeting with the town of Westbrookfield again to figure out what our next step misses. And then the second piece is the initial, we had an initial meeting with MIAA, which is our insurance provider, we started talking about next year's rates and some incentive plans that they may have. Right now, Tara Fafford is our Meyer consultant, she is forwarding me as soon as I get that out, forward out to the budget subcommittee, as well as the school committee, what type of incentive programs they have to help offset the cost of health insurance. They are predicting that inflation is gonna hit us pretty hard, not likely this year, but in the following two or three years, that those rates may be increasing. Right now, she said it's probably gonna be anywhere. Right now, she said it's probably going to be anywhere from six to eleven to twelve percent. Hoping that we're on the lower end of that. And then if there are some incentives that we can take advantage of to help lower that premium, then we're going to look at that and what the potential costs or savings to the district are. So we'll forward that information out to you as soon as we get it from that. And the last thing is for cable channel twelve. Cable channel twelve no longer exists. They had to change their channel. So if anybody's watching this, you're watching it on cable channel six now, not twelve. But just for the minutes when we post them on our website, we'll just post that the cable channel no longer exists. Cat twelve is cat six.
Just as a point of clarification, it's not that they had to change it. It's Comcast changed it on them. They had no, they had no choice. I think they were quite happy with, you know, the email address being WCAT twelve. And now they have to change everything, so. But yeah. All right, so we do have one set of minutes from August twenty-eighth that we do need to approve. If anybody sees any additions, subtractions, grammatical errors, or anything.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? As Mr. Duff said, in our, in our packet was the preliminary Washington DC itinerary. We did get some information from our, from our auditor. Back in audit season, so which is the prelude to budget season. Feels like we just came out of budget season, but it'll be starting up before you know it. It is the email from the town of West Brookfield about the catch basins. Mr. Duff did send a letter, an email to both Warren and West Brookfield, inviting them to a budget subcommittee meeting to discuss some of the mandates that we get that are on the agenda and how it affects our budget and basically the state of the school committee, the school district's budget. I know it was read at the Warren selective meeting. I do know that the Warren selective meeting was planning on coming. But it was an invite to all stakeholders. So that'll be at the next budget subcommittee meeting. November?
November sub.
November subcommittee meeting. So we don't have any financial business matters. Subcommittees. Part of their business. Subcommittee updates. Mr. Morgan?
Hello. So we didn't meet back on September eleventh. Went over a few different items. One of the ones was both the audit and any report that we talked about. I know one of the times, one of the things that came up in that meeting was what the cost of those would be. And thank you, Mr. Duff, for bringing that information today. So just to let the whole community, community know what that means is that there's two reports that are done every year. There is the end of year report, which basically summarizes the last fiscal year. That goes basically, this is being done by our, our people that do our audits. Thank you. Looks like you're expedited. And that's at a cost of four thousand dollars. But then we also have our annual audit that's done every year. It's been done every year since I've been here. And that goes at about twenty-eight thousand dollars. So of the budget, there's thirty-two thousand dollars. Our budget specifically for audits and end of year reports. And that's basically gets us both for our A and Ds, the end of year report. And the audit just keeps track of where we are and typically gives us some things to work on the upcoming year. Though the last few years has been anything major, a few minor things we've been addressing. So usually that's a little bit of discussion in the budget subcommittee meeting. Talked a little bit about role aid update and some things being done to support an increase of that. You already hit it, talking about the food service update and how the future, how we're going to do that in the future. Obviously, we're really in a good spot and it comes from a dollar and cents perspective. We have a little special ed update. There's two, for those people that are new from the, from the school grade perspective, there's kind of two updates that we get typically every month. And that one was the food service. And that started back when we had some problems. It's kind of like a scorecard update dashboard type thing, just to give us a heads up. And then if there's anything, we drill into it. The other one is also the special ed update. And as you guys know, we talk about it here a lot, that that, there's those upfront mandates. Kind of goes to the meeting we're going to have in November as well. What we're on about for from a dollar and cents perspective for tuitions and things like that. And that, there's lots of that are controlled based on people that might move in, vow, just changes that happen, IEPs, things like that. And that's something we try and say in front of the, the budget meetings, just to make sure that we're not having surprises or if there's something significant, we can take action if there's need in that perspective. We also talked about upcoming transportation budget for the buses, potentially getting some quotes and stuff like that for that upcoming year. And we talked a little bit of, I think we're talking about business today or from that perspective. So we talked a little bit about other business persons early in the administration office. Our next meeting is October sixteen, probably starting after six.
Personal subcommittee, Sarah, we didn't have a?
We don't have anything at the moment, and we don't have anything planned. So it's nice and quiet there. For clerical purposes, Sarah's with an H. It's always felt different in different places, so just have an H.
Thank you, Sarah. Brian's with a Y, Sarah's with an H.
Hannah, right?
Hey, Andrew, Hannah is without an H.
Hannah's without an H. Did they, did they, we don't approve the agenda, right? Policy subcommittee, we don't have any update. There is no meeting scheduled yet. They, we are going to put one together coming up soon, but it's not set yet. The school building subcommittee updating. Didn't meet September eleventh prior to the budget. Basically went over a lot of the things that Mr. Duff just, just mentioned, the sinkholes at West Brookfield. There was a small roof leak that Mr. Estrel had fixed. We both, both Warren and West Brookfield are in the middle of and or starting a green communities initiative. The Warren Elementary Green Communities HVAC update. They're, they're running behind schedule. We got another notification today that they are now an additional week behind schedule. So now I believe the tentative completion date is like the middle of October. So Mr. Duff reached out to Mr. Ferrera, who's the town administrator in Warren, as this is technically a Warren project because the funding and the grant, everything went from the town of Warren through the state for the Green Communities Act. So Mr. Ferrera is going to start getting a little more involved in, you know, staying on top of them and getting them accountable for their, for their timelines and their delays. The building subcommittee did talk about patching the stairs here at Quabog. The front stairs and back stairs leading into the building are in disrepair. I think they need some, they need some patching. The freezer update was, was the topic of discussion. So the concrete work for the stairs is also going to be done with concrete work for the pad for the freezer. So we'll have all that stuff done soon. Got an update on the cameras. There's a few additional cameras needed throughout the district, just as they were all put in. Couple of little spots that need to be, you know, kind of tweaked a little bit. So we're going to order a couple of additional cameras. And then they also discussed the equipment needs for building grounds. Next meeting, building subcommittee will be October sixteen at six o'clock. Building. Regional Agreement Amendment Committee. We did hear back from North Brookfield. They had gotten their, the regional agreement back from their legal counsel. I sent it off to Russ. Russ is looking at it. And then once he goes through all the changes, we'll set up another meeting of the regional compensation committee. And then we'll move forward with that. So there's no meeting scheduled yet, but there is one coming soon. New business. Mr. Duff, the floor is yours.
Thanks. So we've had posted for the last year or so, finance director position. We've had several interviews throughout the course of the last year. The school committee and the budget subcommittee, as we discussed where we're at, voted to continue on with TMS this year. So we signed a contract with TMS, which we can end their contract with a thirty day notice. That's always been part of the program. The issue that we've run into TMS this year is that we do have them three days a week, which is very helpful. But we have three different people that this year, three days a week. And as you know, three different people do things three very different ways. Not that any way is not the right way to do it. It's just different. So we've had a little bit of difficulty in terms of some of the FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four rollover. We're really in a position that we do need a business manager. We need a business manager five days a week. It's something that helps with our grants. As you know, a large portion of our district lives on a lot of the grant funding that we have. And then to keep track of all the journal entries and the budget lines and things like that, particularly when we're going into a budget season. So we did have interviews again with Beryl Agnew. Was interviewed last week with folks from the central office. We thought that Beryl would be a good fit for the central office. She's currently the administrative assistant in the main office here at Quabog. Beryl comes to Quabog with experience from Colorado, working, doing procurements and grants, as well as procurements and grants at the town of Hockington. She can speak more to that than I can. But she's done budgets, worked with different counties, which is a piece of the regionalization agreement. I would say that, you know, if, if Beryl would talk about an executive session, if we were to go forward with Beryl, we would have to have a mentor for her that we have. That's something that we can get taken care of very easily. And I think having Mr. Hanfield as well in the position that he's in and having experience with TMS. I think going through the budget process myself for the last twelve years, you get to learn even some helps of the budget. I by no means am a financial expert. I understand, you know, the, the, I understand most of it, but clearly not all of it. I think Beryl will bring a high level of dedication and enthusiasm to the, to the district as she wants to see us move forward. So Beryl is here tonight. If people have any questions for her.
We'll give you, we'll give you the seat in the center.
Yeah, come on up, Beryl.
So your resume wasn't in the packet. But I say the same thing, I say it, but pretend we didn't see your resume. Give us, give us the history of Mrs. Wagner.
I'm going to be broken record for some of these already gone. My name is Beryl Wagner. I am thirty-three. I'm originally from Hockington, Massachusetts, but I spent my twenties in Colorado. I worked for a municipality out there, the city of St. Louis Springs. I was their public works coordinator. So in that position, I oversaw the administrative, operational and financial function for the seven divisions within the department. So it's airport, engineering, fleet, street, transit, water and wastewater. And I also assisted the director in, in our own budget. And a lot of what that job was, was building the budget was a great coordination, art procurement, a lot of compliance, a lot of capital projects and budgeting, kind of front camps and practices. I was also liaison basically to a lot of different stakeholders. I worked with the county, with some of our smaller committees and groups like the Chamber. Even in the projects where I have to, could be the conduct for information between our very small town ranchers and FAA executives. So quite a broad reach in that respect. And I absolutely loved that position. And having not had the first granddaddy of the family, been forced to move home under the pressure, I probably would have retired in that position. And so that has really afforded me a lot of skills, I think, are transferable to this position in the way that it's wide reaching and it has an impact on the community. That was kind of the thing that really drew me to this, this position specifically. I, I woke up one day and out of nowhere, I was like, I have to work for the municipality that I, I lived in. And I don't know why, it was just kind of like a calling. And I feel the same pull to this kind of position that has such an impact. Not only in the larger communities, but also to having my own son, kind of changed my entire world. We're investing all of our resources and enthusiasm and, and all of our gusto towards the future of our kids is really paramount. And then after St. Louis Springs moving to home, I was procurement and grants manager for the town of Hockington, which is really neat because I grew up in Hockington. So working for the town I grew up in was really wonderful. Also to come back like fifteen years later and see such change. I really loved that position because I was the sole point person for all procurement and grants. So I got to do everything from grant acquisition and writing to the finance and compliance piece of it, to everything in procurement, where it was writing our, our fees, our bids, and to making sure that everything was MGL compliant. There's what, like seven or eight chapters of master of law that I had to make sure that it was compliant on. And building the budget, going through that process was really neat because I always tell contractors, I love the hood of a car, but I don't know what's going on inside. No one knows what's happening under the hood of the car. So I think those experiences are kind of my transferable skills that I can bring to, to this position. So I'd be really excited that, if you have a question. You guys have any questions for me? Happy to answer them.
Do you have any questions?
I can talk forever.
Well, I mean, like I always say, you know, it is a school community hire, but just like the special education department is, is a school community hire. What do I know about special education, right? What do I know about finance? I'm a salesman, you know? So I always lean on, you know, the administrators that are making the recommendations. And you do come very highly recommended by Mr. Duff. So.
I think it's because I am like hungry for this position. Like I am a voracious learner. And whatever skills that I still have to learn, because there's a difference between municipal and education, obviously. I am excited that I can be kind of a sponge for, for this community. You know, we can create the leader that we want rather than trying to fit a square peg in a round hole, per se. I can be that sponge. I'm, I'm excited because I'm also working on my master's in accounting, so I can get a tandem experience with my education. Very excited about that opportunity.
And you do have the MCPPO certification.
Yes.
Certain public purchasing. Which is funny because every, every past director of finance that, that we've had, at least in the fourteen years that I've been on this committee, has always had to go and get that certification because nobody ever had it, you know? So that was the only thing I recognized. I was like, hey, wait a minute. She won't have to go get that certification.
Oh, wow, was the process. So Massachusetts is extremely extra when it comes to about everything. But specifically financing procurement. There's, there's chapter thirty, thirty-two, thirty, thirty-nine. There's chapter ninety. There's chapter seven, chapter one forty-nine. You have to memorize and learn all the different hints and answers for procurement. I think it was like three months of basically another degree. It was really interesting, but wow, I take it serious.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Duff, any last comments?
Like I said, the administrative team felt very strongly that Beryl was going to grow into a tremendous financial director in our district. I think the skill sets she's learning, that she brings to the table are going to match Madeline's skill sets very well. Because the finance director isn't just doing the general budget, it's doing the grants as well. And we're bringing in, you know, over two million dollars a year in grants. There's lots of requirements that go along with that. And I think having Beryl in the central office five days a week, where Cindy has a question, Lisa has a question, or I have a question, or Beryl has a question, it's nice to know that there's somebody in that office. And I think Beryl is going to learn very quickly. And I think that we have a really good mentor that will support her, that has regional school district experience, very similar to Quabog.
You don't have to wait until next Tuesday, but the person that came in Tuesday last week was there to answer your question.
Correct.
To continue on the question.
And also we're a holic, so I will probably answer your question like two in the morning.
Well, I noticed what Mr. Duff was saying. You come very highly recommended by the administrative team. I'm looking over the administrative team and they're all nodding their head. Your agreement, so. Well, with that being said, we have to obviously do some negotiations and strategies in the executive session, which we're going to need to Mr. Duff. which we're going to need to, Mr. Duff, but, uh, I will entertain a motion, um, to, uh, vote Beryl Wagner as the, uh, director of finance pending contract negotiations.
So move.
Second. Motion being seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Duff will be in touch?
Oh, that's it?
You're good. Thank you. All right, well, let's see, and, no public today, so if anybody in the public has any question or comments that they want to make about any items that are on the agenda. With that being said, no. Uh, Greg's not here to make the motion to go into a second discussion, so who's got the, uh, who's got the word and how to make the motion?
What's that?
I think it's one of the others, Warren.
I'll say the motion.
All right, you can help me with the names, uh?
I will.
Make sure I don't forget. All right, uh, I make a motion to go into the executive session to show the Mass General Law Thirty-A, chapter thirty-A, section twenty-one, uh, to talk about strategic strategy with respect to the contract negotiations of the finance, uh, director of finance. Uh, the executive session should include all members of the school committee, Mr. Duff.
Mrs. Courtney.
Mrs. Courtney.
I think that's it, right? The chair in the executive session.
The executive session, the passing of the open session to the chairman.
Vote.
And the tension vote. There you go. Second.
I'm not impressed. Roll call, roll. Brittany.
Huh? Aye, sorry.
Aye.
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 All right, well, we'll go, we'll go into...